I call it to order, the December 16, 2009, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, approval of minutes of November 18, 2019, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I immediately approve the minutes of the November 18, 2019, regular meeting as submitted.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? 7:00 PM, we have David Parenti, Fire Chief, swearing in of firefighter, paramedic, James Kelly.
So, we had an opening due to one of our other previous hirings not making it through the Fire Academy, and James, as you know, came to the top of the list. We took him through the same process. We do all of our hires, which is an oral board, and then they have to sit down and discuss things with me. That's after the cover letter review and the resume review, and James really came out as a candidate that we wanted to move forward. He most recently has been with East Care and Brewster Ambulance, and he was a per diem firefighter with the Stow Fire Department. I spoke with Chief Landry over there, who gave him incredibly high recommendations, said he's a great guy, you're gonna love him. So far, he's been okay. If he lost his name tag, I understand. We'll have to follow up with that. James graduated from Manord High School in '95, and he's went to Quinsig for his paramedic certification, and he'll be attending the Fire Academy in the lovely weather of June, July, and August. We're currently scheduling over six months out for the Fire Academy now, so it's crazy. But he did his two-week orientation already, he's been assigned to what shift?
B shift.
B shift, there we go. He's been assigned to B shift, and he'll be riding the ambulance for the next year anyway, becoming a better paramedic, so we are very, very excited to have James on board.
All right, thank you very much. James, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Just honored to be here, and serve the town as best as I can.
Great.
Make you guys proud.
Excellent, thank you. Do you have family members here?
I do.
Would you get her to introduce them?
Sure. So, at the end, this is my mother, Lillian Kelly, this is my son, James, my wife Natalie, and my daughter, Seraphina, and at the end, this is my father, Douglas.
Great. Thank you all for making him available for us. So, look forward to having you on the force, and it's just an excellent, excellent department, and I think you'll really find that these people are very dedicated professionals and also very good people to work with, so thank you very much, appreciate your being here. Members of the board, Leslie?
Yeah, thank you very much for applying to our department, to begin with. We're thrilled that you're here. It is a wonderful department. Chief is wonderful, we have a great, great staff over there, and I think you'll really enjoy being here very, very much, you have a wonderful, again, a wonderful background. And I just wanted to ask, along with paramedic certification, you're also certified in ACLS and PALS, which is?
PALS, pediatric.
Advanced.
Advanced lifesaving.
Okay.
Yep.
And then ACLS is?
Advanced cardiac lifesaving.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody in the audience.
Yeah, well, see, I'm so used to, I'm looking, I'm agreeing, I know what that is.
Exactly, you get used to the acronym, you need to think about what it actually means, but we're thrilled that you're here, thank you to your family for being here, and what I like to do, as I always do, is have the rest of the department who is here in support of you, introduce themselves to the audience here.
Chris Detro, firefighter, paramedic, of Northborough.
Todd Yelich, firefighter, paramedic.
What do I got in?
Fred Hurst, Captain.
Rob Tev, Captain.
Jamie DeSoto, Captain.
Joel Rosenkranz, firefighter, paramedic.
Captain Command, firefighter, paramedic.
Wonderful.
Thank you all for being here, yeah.
Thrilled to see you all here, thank you very, very much for your support and all your work, so thank you.
Stand up over there. No, I've never had to do this side before, so.
Get away from us.
Oh, yeah, right there.
Who said that?
Hi, James Kelly.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will bear truth and allegiance.
I will bear truth and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, James Kelly.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me.
Discharge all the duties incumbent on me.
As firefighter, paramedic for the town of Northborough.
As firefighter, paramedic of town of Northborough.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understandings.
And understandings.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
James Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for coming, yeah.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Somebody enjoys these meetings.
If she stayed a little longer, she'd be great.
Excellent. It's now past the hour of 7:05 PM, we have a public hearing continued from November 18, 2019, to consider an application for a new wine malt package store license as submitted by VEDC LLC, Doing Business as Richdale Convenience, for premises located at 5 West Main Street. Do you have the applicant?
As is the board, I am Attorney Henry Levin, representing the applicant in this particular matter. This is Mr. Patel, who is the owner and manager of the LLC that is the applicant here. He currently owns two other places, one in Andover and one in Worcester, so he's very familiar with the laws and how to run a business of this type, and the regulations and so forth, and we are hoping that the board will vote favorably in allowing this to go through.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
I think, as part of the application, we had the review by Detective Sergeant Brian Griffin, who had no objections or anything in terms of background check and everything, so. Members of the board, do you have any questions about the application? None? Very good. This is a public hearing, if there are members of the public present who wish to speak on this, sir, please state your name and address, yeah? You've got a microphone up behind you, so you should be good, yeah?
For the record, Mark Bornstein, I'm an attorney at Badgett and Dewey. I represent Northborough Liquors. This evening, I'm joined by Gary Ncemi-Dollywall. This evening, we are before you because Northborough Liquors is in opposition to this particular application. If I may approach the chair and the board.
Sure.
If I may provide just a brief overview of Massachusetts law related to the issuance of liquor licenses. Under Section 23 of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, which authorizes the issuance of liquor licenses, the section speaks to serving the public need and protecting the public good. And in the particular case, Baller &amp; Inc., the licensing board of Boston, the Massachusetts Appeals Court enumerated certain factors referred to as the Baller &amp; Inc. factors, which are to be considered by local licensing authorities, such as this board, to test the assessment of public need and appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location. The Baller &amp; Inc. factors include the appropriateness of a location of the proposed license premises, the number of licensees in the locale, the views of the inhabitants of the locale, traffic, noise, the size of the store, and the sort of operation that carries the license, and the reputation of the applicant. This application should be denied based on these particular Baller &amp; Inc. factors. If I may, first, the number of licensees in the town. It is my understanding, based on the town's records, that there are six package stores within less than two miles of the proposed license premises. There is Northborough Center Gasoline, which is within 500 feet of the proposed liquor license, license premises, and then Northborough Liquors, which is directly next door to the proposed liquor, proposed license premises. Before you is a photo to show the proximity between the existing liquor licensee, Northborough Liquors, and the proposed liquor licensee. The customers of Richdale Convenience Store, which is already in operation, as I'm sure this board is aware, regularly visit Northborough Liquors to purchase their wine and beer and spirits, and Northborough Liquors directs customers to Richdale Convenience Store to purchase food products and other items, and vice versa. So, given the amount of liquor licensees that are within two miles of the proposed liquor license premises, in particular, Northborough Liquors and Northborough Gasoline, Center Gasoline, the public need in this particular area has been met. And as a corollary to this, it is my understanding that this is the last new package store license that's available in the town of Northborough. So, if this license were to be granted, and there would be three liquor licensees within 500 feet of one another, any new business that would like to open in the town of Northborough would have to purchase an existing license, or additional licenses would have to be sought from the state, which would increase the cost of business and would stymie growth in the town of Northborough. Second, another factor I'd like to speak to in terms of the Baller &amp; Inc. factors, is the views of the inhabitants of the town of Northborough. Earlier today, I sent to the town 121 signatures, and I don't know if those were shared with the board.
They were a part of the record at this point.
Excellent, thank you. So, within the course of a week, Northborough Liquors was able to obtain 121 signatures in opposition to this particular liquor license. In addition, it is my understanding that the owner of Northborough Center Gasoline wrote a letter to this particular board as part of the record in his opposition, Jack Azar. So, we have those two particular Baller &amp; Inc. factors. In addition, I'd like to speak to another factor, which is not a Baller &amp; Inc. factor, but it's a practical factor, and that is that Northborough Liquors only sells wine and beer and spirits. Beer and wine represent 70% of their revenue. If Richdale Convenience Store has granted a liquor license for the sale of wine and malt beverages, that will significantly impact their particular business. This particular business obtained an SBA loan six years ago to start this business, there's a substantial outstanding balance on that particular loan, and if this particular license is granted, it's probably unlikely that Northborough Liquors is going to be able to survive. So, based on those particular factors, I ask that you deny this application, see? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Anyone else wishing to speak? Any further comment from the applicant?
There is an available new liquor license. Each town is given so many. No matter what happens, you have competition. That's going to happen no matter where you go. They do have a store, they've been, and they run a very good operation. I understand the position of the people next door, but that's what, that's what business is all about, and to say to this gentleman, "I'm sorry, but we have six others, and you're not welcome in this town," I don't think that that's right. You know, it's hard for me to argue something, I understand their position, but that's what happens. He has, as he said, there's a gas station across the street. He has, did he object to that, or did that person object to him? That's what happens in a small town, it's not a large, like the city of Boston, something like that, where you have so many different areas, and I would, I would assume that most of the business areas are in a small area, and that's why you have the congregation of the six areas in that area. That's, you know, again, they're not objecting to him or his business, they're objecting to competition. I can understand it, but I don't agree with it.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir. I will acknowledge for the record that we did receive information concerning petition by customers of Northborough Liquor in opposition to this application, we did receive communication from a gas station across the street. Sorry? Northborough Center Gas. Northborough Center Gas, right, also in opposition. I guess I'd just like to point out, too, that the legal basis for the board's decision is determining what is appropriate in the interest of the public good. So, although there are issues of business competition or whatever, those are not matters that pertain to our decision process here. So, all of our decision-making will be in the context of what we believe to be is within the legal framework and within the public good, so. We also have, just wanted to make reference to, as part of our information on this matter, we have a map showing us the current locations of all the currently issued malt and wine licenses, package store licenses, which are distributed across the bounds of the Northborough Town property line. There are the two locations currently in close proximity here, in the center of town, and this application would be a third, which is in that immediate area. This is the only unissued malt and wine package store license that the town has remaining, and so on that basis, we'll be making the determination of what is in the public good with regards to the issuance of that license, so. With that, ask for comments from the board, Don?
Yeah, addressing the public need, I don't see that there's a public need when we have two places in the center of town already in such a close, close proximity. The other part being, public need with two businesses right next to each other doesn't seem to make sense for public need, because if people are going to go, there's a place to access already that's right in that location. The other part was as to protect the common good, and I think there's also the issue of the parking issue in the center of town. You know, we've gone through this master plan process, and we talk about we want it to be walkable and whatever, but it's not really a walkable area as such, and people are going to drive to the center of town to buy their beer and wine or alcohol, and I just feel that once, one place on one side of the road and one place on the other side of the road is adequate to serve the public. So, I would want to save this liquor license for some other place that is more, would justify the need more, so that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Tim?
In some of the documentation we got from Towns Council, one of the cases, it states, "In the case of liquor licenses, town and city boards may exercise judgment about public convenience and public good." And as far as public convenience goes, you'd see from the pictures that putting a place, another malt and wine place right next door, doesn't increase public convenience. It's not, if people need to get beer, wine, or spirits, there's a place in, having to walk next door isn't going to increase convenience for anybody in town, so I think that's also something for everybody to consider when making a decision.
Okay, thank you. If I could, just for a second, Leslie, I think I was remiss, if there is no more public input, we should close the public hearing. If I had a motion, please.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Second and all in favor? Thank you. Sorry, Leslie, no.
Yeah, I have to agree with that, and again, no offense to either party, and they were both good presentations. Certainly, anyone is welcome to apply for whatever they wish to in the interest of business and doing business in town, but again, the crux of our, what we need to consider is, is public need, convenience, and so forth, and it just doesn't seem as if this is something that, that serves that purpose in a nutshell, so.
Thank you, Juliette?
So, I agree with my fellow selectmen that our job is to determine public need, and I just, I don't see the need for an additional store of this kind.
I find myself in agreement with my fellow board members. In part, the purpose of the number of licenses is to distribute them appropriately so as to provide as much convenience and service to the, to the town citizens, and considering that there are already two such licenses issued in this immediate geographic location, I don't find that the public good is substantially enhanced by issuing a third one, so that's my outlook on this particular issue. Any further discussion? In light of the discussion, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to deny the application as submitted by VEDC LLC, DBA, Richdale Convenience, for the reason that the public need does not require a wine and malt package store license at the requested location, 5 West Main Street, since there are two package stores immediately adjacent to the site, and all alcoholic package store license at 15 West Main Street, Northborough Liquors, and a wine and malt package store license across the street at 36 West Main Street, Northborough Center Gasoline, so that there is already an adequate number of places in this area of town where the public may obtain alcoholic beverages.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Just a second, may I just, obviously, there is an appeal process, which we'll advise you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, past the hour of 7:10, we have Anthony DeLeonardis.
I'll take that.
Okay.
Honestly, you rolled right the first time, and I was like, wow.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, don't worry, I can come back.
Third time is guaranteed. This is Doing Business as Agro Dolce, to consider an application for a common victual or an entertainment license as submitted by Agro Dolce LLC, for premises located at 35 Solomon Pond Road. Could you please introduce yourselves?
I am Anthony DeLeonardis.
And my full name is Paris Gabby Berdos, but everybody calls me Vula, because it's easier to pronounce it.
Let's go with that. Could you talk a little bit about your application here? Just explain the nature of the business and what you like to do here?
Sure. So, essentially, in where, obviously, next to Costa Diva, where Giuseppe's originally was, there's a small cafe in that cafe that was operated as Cafe Norma for a little while, and now it's been defunct for probably about 12 or 13 months, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. I think they went out last September. In terms of filing for the permit, obviously, we just would like to be able to play music, et cetera, so that it's not absolute dead silence or just the sound of the refrigeration equipment and stuff that's humming in the room itself, but realistically, we just, coffee, breakfast sandwiches, pastry, smoothies, and if that's not to your liking, then I don't know what else we could probably do for you, but we just want to bring a simple quality product to Northborough. Vula had done some work for the gentleman who operates Costa Diva, and within that, we kind of just stumbled upon the situation. Feeding people makes me happy, I've never done it, I've never done it commercially in terms of owning my own thing, I've ran a number of restaurants and nightclubs and stuff within the city of Boston, and that's about it, I guess, I mean, in terms of just trying to sum everything up quickly, if you obviously have any specific questions, just let us know. I will say that I did work in, or still do technically, work in nightlife for 21 years, and there was, someone had mentioned to me that there was a concern of, when we decided to take the space over, we didn't want alcohol in our portion of that structure, and so we had the liquor license removed from that portion, feeling that if we ended up wanting to do like, if we end up operating throughout the weekend and we wanted to like potentially serve mimosa or something like that, that we would obviously come and approach you guys a year or two down the road and ask for a license, much like what we just saw here, but there's, it was explained to me that there may be a worry that alcohol from the Italian, the fine Italian restaurant would somehow gravitate over to our side, and I can very confidently say that between all of my life experience and stuff like that, that will not occur at all, so.
Okay.
We just want to caffeinate you guys, right? Like, I mean, obviously, as you can, between the diet coke and a cup of coffee, like, America does run on caffeine, and that's, that's more the game that we'd like to get into.
Right, right. So, you would be responsible for essentially the enforcement to ensure that alcohol from Costa Diva doesn't migrate over into your operation?
We both have a background, and so I do, we own a hospitality staffing agency, that's what my family does.
Okay.
I've been tip certified probably since I was 15, which sounds like it's illegal, but it's not, so I have been taking alcohol away from people and protecting our clients for a very, very, very long time. You can obviously look at him, he looks like somebody who would tell you no to taking alcohol where it's not supposed to be.
Sure, sure. I understand, just structurally in the building, there's a shared restroom facilities.
The restroom is shared, yeah.
So, okay.
And in true nightclub fashion, there's actually, we have access to a couple of the stanchions, so we kind of was, we're planning on creating like a travel this way. If Vula or I are not able to escort the customer to the bathroom, depending upon obviously business volume, we have it kind of.
Maped out.
A foolproof way to steer people towards the restroom and then return, as such.
Okay, yeah. In terms of operating hours, I'm just wondering, is there a difference between the operating hours?
Very much so.
And the operating hours of the restaurant? So, you're operating at different times typically?
Yeah.
We are, yeah, we are aiming for 6 or 7 AM to 2 or 3 PM.
Okay.
We kind of like, we kind of feel like between the locale and that we could stay open until 8:00 PM like a Starbucks, but realistically, after like, you know, everybody, all the professionals on Donald Lynch Boulevard and stuff come get their second cup of coffee before they wrap up the day of work, we don't necessarily see there being a great deal of traffic flow, so in terms of paying for employees and the lights and everything else, it just didn't seem to serve our purpose or the needs of Northborough, so we're, we're still, first time that we've owned a business together, and obviously, we've, but definitely within the window of 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, it may be 7:03, we haven't.
We're still fighting about that.
Still worried.
We disagree.
Yeah.
Not to be super random, but I actually took one of the, like, the bouncer clickers from work that you would use to count humans, and sat in Costa Diva's parking lot from 6:00 AM until 2:00 PM, and just counted cars all day, so we care, you know, and essentially, what we can't agree on is that there were about 608 cars that drove by that parking lot.[1670.97]
him. He looks like somebody who would tell you no to taking alcohol where it's not supposed to be.
Sure, sure. I understand, just structurally in the building, there's a shared restroom facilities.
The restroom is shared, yeah. And in true nightclub fashion, there's actually, we have access to a couple of the stanchions. So we kind of was, we're planning on creating like a travel this way. If Vula or I are not able to escort the customer to the bathroom, depending upon obviously business volume, we have it kind of a foolproof way to steer people towards the restroom and then return as such.
Okay, yeah. In terms of operating hours, I'm just wondering, is there a difference between the operating hours and the operating hours of the restaurant? So you're operating at different times.
Yeah.
We are, yeah, we are aiming for 6:00 or 7:00 AM to 2:00 or 3:00 PM.
Okay.
We kind of like, we kind of feel like between the locale and that we could stay open until 8:00 PM like a Starbucks, but realistically, after like, you know, everybody, all the professionals on Donald Lynch Boulevard and stuff come get their second cup of coffee before they wrap up the day of work, we don't necessarily see there being a great deal of traffic flow. So in terms of paying for employees and the lights and everything else, it just didn't seem to serve our purpose or the needs of Northborough. So we're, we're still, first time that we've owned a business together, and obviously, we've, but definitely within the window of 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and it may be 7:00 to 3:00. We haven't...
We're still fighting about that.
Still worried.
We disagree. Not to be super random, but I actually took one of the, like, the bouncer clickers from work that you would use to count humans and sat in Costa Diva's parking lot from 6:00 AM until 2:00 PM and just counted cars all day. So we care, you know? And essentially, what we can't agree on is that there were about 608 cars that drove by that parking lot between 6:00 and 7:00 AM. So that's why we're in contention.
Very good. Is, I didn't see any mention of background checks or anything like that. Is any of that necessary for this application? Or is that not?
It's common victor, not serving alcohol.
Any alcohol involved, so there's no need to.
And just, and just for the record too, proper signage indicating no alcohol would be allowed in that area would be posted, in addition to any physical barriers and policing.
For clarity, do you need that on the interior facing towards Costa Diva so that no one travels through? Or do you need it on the front door?
We'll give you some more guidance, yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And vice versa, no, you really can't. Okay.
I have a question for you, if I may.
Sure.
Footprint license for Costa Diva, does that include this area? Or is that a separate area? Then they, then he needs to apply for...
We can test.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is there a complication, chief?
No, it sounds like Dan's got a code.
Okay, very good. Sorry. Members of the board, dawn.
Days of operation?
Currently, because, well, the plan currently is Monday through Friday. I still operate our business, and Anthony still has his full-time job. So the weekend is a little tough for us at the moment until probably six months to a year out when we have staff that we can trust to open just Saturday, because we would like to stay closed on Sundays. But we are aiming for the business portion of Northborough's population. So we would definitely Monday through Friday. In the future, we would like Monday through Saturday, given that we have a staff that supports us, and we don't have to be there being like, no one's here to unlock the door, which is, you know, a big worry of ours. So...
Any other questions, Leslie?
Yeah, so the layout looks great. Where would the television be in this drawing here?
Television, are you, have you been in there before?
Yes.
So when you walk in through the front door, the television is mounted in the bookcase right over the fireplace.
Okay. That's great. And you serve, again, go over what you serve?
Coffee, tea, pastries, protein shakes, and breakfast sandwiches, possibly lunch sandwiches. We'll see what we can do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just say, unrelated, I've never been to a selectman meeting and tell me what an emotional roller coaster. I'll be here every month either way. This was great.
Our goal is to make it as dull as possible. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to grant a common victual or license and an entertainment license to Anthony De...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Leonardis.
Leonardis. Right?
Yeah, you're great.
Awesome. And Paris Gavi Berdos?
Yes.
She even rolled.
I know, you rolled.
Of Agro Dolce LLC for premises located at 35 Solomon Pond Road, with the condition that the licensee receive satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Great. Thank you very much, and good luck with your operation.
Now that you already voted yes, I would just like to say that watching you stick up for small local business was remarkably comforting before we sat with you, Chair. I've obviously shopped at a million Richdales, but that was, that was awesome.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much, and good luck. Now past the hour of 7:15, Kathy Jewbert, Town Planner, execution of purchase and sales agreement for 615 Howard Street. Welcome, Kathy.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Kathy.
Hello. So I'm here tonight to talk about 615 Howard Street. And I believe everyone has a map of the parcel. If people aren't completely familiar with the location, it's part of the old, well, actually, it's still today, owned by two members of the Bennett family. They own several lots out in that area of town, which is almost on the Berlin town line. And so about eight months, eight or nine months ago, or so ago, the Bennetts approached the Conservation Commission and the Open Space Committee to see if the town might be interested in purchasing part of their property, actually, the majority of their, of this particular parcel. It directly abuts Mount Pisgah. The Commission and the Open Space Committee were, you know, immediately on board and, you know, when can we do it? And so eight months later, you know, they're still wondering why it's taking me so long to do this. But certainly, there's, you know, the process that we need to follow, and we've been working with Town Council, you know, all, everything that's involved with the purchase of a piece of property has been done. The title search has been done. The Conservation Commission took their vote and signed the deed at their meeting, I believe it was the last week or the week before. And then in the meantime, the, each one of the Commissions, the Conservation Commission, the Open Space Committee, and we also involved the Trails Committee. And so all three of those boards, you know, took votes in the affirmative to purchase this property. The intent, obviously, is to use existing funds through the Conservation Commission. There is, I think everyone's familiar with it, there is what's called the Conservation Fund, and that is funded by the Community Preservation Act. So every, just about every year, money is put into that particular fund. And so we'll be using the, you know, the Conservation Fund to purchase the property. The Conservation Fund is allowed by state statute, and it doesn't require a town meeting vote, but it certainly requires a vote of the Conservation Commission and then also of the Board of Selectmen. So what I'm here for, for you tonight, is to asking you to consider signing the purchase and sale agreement that has been prepared, obviously reviewed, but prepared by Town Council. And the purchase price for the property, it's a little over 19 acres. We refer to it as backland because we won't have access to the property from, directly from Howard Street. The access will be through Mount Pisgah, where we, you know, presently the town has, you know, a significant parking lot off of Smith Road, excuse me, and that's the main access to Mount Pisgah. So there's already trails on the property. People have been using the property for, you know, forever. Not so much as public property, but, you know, trails have been created, and the Bennetts have, you know, over the years, allowed people to, you know, to have, you know, public use of their property. So we're very excited to have the opportunity because it's, I mean, the fact that it's, you know, just a little under 20 acres and it directly abuts town-owned conservation land is a nice opportunity for us to be able to expand open space in town.
Right.
And the, and the purchase price is $390,000.
And that's determined how?
But we first started off by doing an appraisal of the property. So we go out to bid, find an appraiser, and then, you know, based on what the property is going to be used for, there's certain types of appraisals that they'll do. We worked with the assessor's office also and had Dean Brogie review our appraisal along with Town Council.
So the purchase price has been praised, reviewed, and justified?
Yes, yes, and agreed upon. Yes, yes, justified and agreed upon by all the parties.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Tim?
Is there any glaring reason why the town shouldn't buy?
Not if you talk to the, no, actually, I should, no, there isn't any reason. But the, when this became available, when the, because a lot of people approached the town with either backland or, you know, maybe land that they've inherited, or sort of land that they've hung on to, and realizing that it's no longer, that for whatever reason, it's not developable. You know, they approached the town and were like, hey, you know, how about we donate this, you know, 30 acres to you or whatever, and it's, you know, wetlands, it's not usable, it's not adjacent to town-owned land. We have a whole criteria, excuse me, that internally we go through when someone does either offer to donate land to the town or, or ask to work with the town on possibly purchasing the property. So this, this piece of land, you know, checks, checks all the boxes, as they say. So the Conservation Commission and the Open Space Committee were very excited when this came their way.
Great. Thank you. Leslie?
Kathy, thank you very much. I know it's a lot of work to get something like this to the point where it comes before us. Is there anything on that property, any kind of miscellaneous structures that need to be removed or anything?
No, all the structures, we've done sightwalks, we've done staff sightwalks. Mia McDonald, our conservation agent in particular, has been out there several times through the course of this, you know, process. And then, of course, the appraiser that we hired also went out there, and that was one time with Mia McDonald. So the, so we do check for, you know, as part of the appraisal, we do check for, you know, outbuildings, old vehicles, you know, this was all farmland at one point, a dairy farm. So there are a couple of outbuildings, and there's an existing house. But all of that is on a lot that was created that's going to be sold. And I don't know whether, and there's some vehicle, old abandoned vehicles, but it's all on the front, what we call a frontage lot, so all down towards Howard Street. And whether, I don't know if that property has, that parcel has sold, that's about a four-acre parcel. I don't know if that is sold yet or not. So, you know, someone may use that house, you know, renovate it, or someone may tear it down. I, that, you know, I don't, I don't have any firsthand knowledge about what the situation is today. But we did review, we walked the entire property.
Okay, that's great.
The town wouldn't be responsible for any structures.
Right. Exactly. So there are no hazards and so forth. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Julianne?
So I always ask this question, are the abutters aware of this sale?
Well, the abutters are, they're all relatives.
Okay.
So, so truthfully, Julianne, whether or not they, I mean, they're brothers and sisters. So I'm going to think that, I'm going to make an assumption, which I probably shouldn't, that they've spoken to each other. But we have not done any outreach to the abutters.
I guess, I hope you're right, that the family has agreed upon this, and it seems like it would enhance their property.
Well, yeah, I would think, I would think an abutter would not be opposed to this. Where they live next to open space now, and then now it's going to be permanently. And actually, that's another factor. Because we're using community preservation money, we as a town will have to place, to put a conservation restriction on the property, so that the property forever is maintained as open space. Thank you.
And as you say, Kathy, it's already, thanks to the generosity of the Bennett family, it's already in use as part of the Trails Network?
Yes.
They've been very lenient about allowing people to make use of that portion of the property anyway. So now it just becomes essentially owned by the town, but the activity there isn't necessarily changed in substantive way. So, great. If there are no other questions, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of the 19.2 acres of backland property located at 615 Howard Street, Lot 3-2, as prepared and approved by Town Council.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Great. Thank you very much, and we thank the Bennett family for thinking of the town.
Yes.
Making this property available.
Encourage other Bennetts to... Thank you.
All right, take care, Kathy. Which brings us to reports. Julianne?
Mr. Chair, first, I'd like to mention that Chief Liver has been appointed to, I want to read this correctly, a task force to study and provide recommendations regarding the vaping industry by Governor Baker. So congratulations to you on that. And congratulations to the Fire Department and the Fire Chief about your grant that you just received for personal protective gear. Moving right along, I'd like to thank the Community Affairs Committee and all of the volunteers and staff who helped to organize the holiday events on December 7. Obviously, it took many, many people to help organize the trolley, the stops, the activities, the food, ending with a very special ceremony of lighting the tree and the music. So thank you very much for making that a special day in town. The next thing I want to mention is another thank you to the Master Plan Committee. Obviously, people worked very hard to get that done, and the presentation was, last week was very clear and, I think, concise and very understandable. So that was a very beneficial meeting. I want to mention that White Cliffs Committee will be meeting Wednesday, January 8, at 3:00. But always in January, I think people should check the calendar in case there's a weather issue. And I went to the open meeting law training in Southborough this month. I was wondering if on our website, because of some information that came out, I was wondering if on our website, we could add more agendas from committees as they get posted. Right now, people can access, get notification of selectman planning and zoning. And as we saw tonight, there's a lot of important business that happens in the other committees, and I was wondering how difficult or expensive that would be to add those notifications.
Through the chair? That's actually, the timing of that is great. So we have a, you know, we've rolled out the new website template, and we're populating it now. And at the last meeting, we had that exact discussion. And my approach is, we should add as, all of them if we can. So we're working on that with Civic Plus, the company that manages the software. But essentially, what I'd like to see, and what we are working towards, is being able to get notification of any board or committee that's meeting. There's no, as long as the software supports it and we can do it, then we want to make that available. So we've had that discussion, and that's exactly the direction we're going in.
Good news. And since, since John, you're, you have the floor right now, could you give us an update on the facilities manager position?
Sure. So as you know, in the fiscal '20 budget, the facilities manager was approved. It was budgeted mid-year. We couldn't fit the position financially into the budget for the entire year. So it's effective January 1 through June 30. So that, that position right now isn't available. We would begin the recruitment process, but as you all know, I sort of had a little hiccup here where I lost the HR Director slash Assistant Town Administrator. So I'm focusing on getting that position in first, and then, and then we'll follow up with the facilities manager. Believe me, I had every intention of hiring that position, though. We desperately need it.
And could you just refresh our memory, that the facilities manager will only be for, not for the school, just for the other buildings or school?
Yeah, so the, right now, it's currently conceived. It's a position that would be, would fall under, under my office. And initially, it would be for municipal buildings, for non-school buildings. But the reality is, one of the things that that position will be heavily involved in will be the Financial Planning Committee, which is our Capital Planning Committee. So that position will help us vet out and get information regarding school building projects. Like, right now, Scott had, I can't say enough about our DBW Scott, Director Scott Sharptier. Scott is one of these people who takes a very broad view of whatever's needed, he'll help out. And so Scott's been doing a lot of this. So as the school department has capital projects, like a paving project at the middle school, Scott's been helping them with that. So the idea is that this position will help us with any of the capital projects in general. It will help us with administering the Green Communities Grant Program, which, of course, right now is wrapping up a project at the Melikan Middle School. But in terms of being responsible for the school buildings, that would still fall to the school superintendent administration. I think, again, we have an excellent working relationship with the superintendent, and at some point, I would like to see us get to where we had a centralized facilities department that was responsible for all of our buildings. But initially, this first pass is just getting desperately needed help right now. But like Scott and most of our staff, we don't draw real hard lines of, you know, I'm not going to help the school department, that's a separate department. There's a lot of back and forth and... There's a lot of back and forth and, uh, and assistance. We share equipment. Um, DBW does a lot to help out, uh, with the school properties. And so that will continue to be the, the flavor. So this person won't have, I guess the short answer is this person will not have direct responsibility for school buildings. That, by charter, that falls to the superintendent and the school committee. However, they will have, it will be a resource for the school department on their capital projects, just like they will be for, um, you know, the police department has a boiler replacement going on right now, you know? So this position will help out with the overall coordination of our capital, uh, plan. Uh, but be responsible specifically for the non-school buildings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For that. And I just have one more thing to wish everyone happy holidays and a good new year.
Thank you, Julianne. Leslie?
Okay. Uh, I would also like to mention the fire department grant, that's a Massachusetts Fire Department grant. And in particular, uh, $2,500 was received in total for, um, five particulate firefighting hoods and 20 pair of firefighting gloves.
Yeah, everything, once you stamp fire service on it, the prices get outrageous.
Yeah.
Those hoods in particular are really important. I was, I was talking to the chairman about this not too long ago. Uh, when I first started, we just had these hoods that we wore that were like cotton hoods. These hoods that we wear, that they, that we're purchasing now are actually particulate hoods that stop the cancer causing agents from getting through and getting onto your skin. So a lot of the cancer firefighters is being absorbed, uh, in your neck area and all this area. So that, these particulate hoods are actually are stopping that. We've been slowly purchasing them for everybody. We still didn't have all of them, so that this granted a lot of stuff, finishing up purchasing for all.
Okay. These don't incorporate a breathing apparatus, do they? It's just a different material as far as how it fits?
So the way you put it on is, after you have your coat on, you put your hood on, then you put your mask on, then you pull your hood up over all your straps and your mask, so it actually covers everything. So there's nothing exposed anymore. The old days, you always left skin exposed because that's how you tell, told, you could tell if it was getting too hot. Okay. I could always tell when it was getting hot. But these new hoods are actually, actually stop the particulates from coming in. So even, what happens, the guys would wear the hoods, they come out, they pull the hoods off, their necks will be all black. It was more of a heat protection than anything. This actually keeps the heat away and the particulates away.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's wonderful.
And we're really excited about it.
That's great. Congratulations on that. And I wanted to mention too, that other communities received, um, well, let's see, Berlin received 2,600. Uh, Boylston, 2,465. Uh, we received the 2,500 and Sterling received 1,860. And Clinton Fire Department received $5,000. So I like the seriousness around all of this.
What I really, so there is, this was, grant was twofold. It was turnout gear particularly related to the gloves and the hoods. And then for an extractor. So when we wash our turnout gear, we can't wash it in a normal washing machine. It's a sink. So what we have are these heavy duty extractors. We have one. Because we have one, we weren't eligible for, to purchase one through the grant. We have one, it still works. It's not as big as we'd like, it's not as heavy duty as we'd like, but it still works. Uh, hopefully with a new station, we'll be able to get a larger one, we can do more than one set of gear. Cause when you add, when we wash it, it's one set of gear at a time, which takes a long time when you're washing 20 sets of gear. So, uh, but we didn't need one. I really wanted the departments that needed it, that didn't have an extractor and had to go to the neighboring department to wash a turnout gear. They're the ones that needed it. So.
Is that Clinton, for example?
I think Clinton got one.
Okay, yeah.
Possible. I'd have to lie. Marlboro got one, I believe.
Okay. That's great news. So thank you very much and congrats on that. Um, I attended the K-8 School Committee meeting last week and I'd say probably the main thing that was discussed was a preliminary budget, uh, which comes in right now at 3.99%. So I know that, you know, this is sort of the, the beginning of the budget discussions and there will be more discussion to, to hone that down probably a little bit. So, um, but it was a good discussion, uh, by Greg Martino, the superintendent. I would also just like to thank all residents in general for their generosity this season. Um, thinking about all the charities that take place in town, the Helping Hands, uh, Winter Clothing Drive, uh, the Scouting for Food Drive that was held in November, Toys for Tots, which is always very successful. It's just, it's amazing to see how generous people are, um, given the, uh, things that are mentioned as far as having a need. People come forward and, and do what needs to be done. So I just wanted to thank everyone for that. And I also wanted to thank the Community Affairs Committee. Um, the holiday trolley took place from 12 to 5 on December 7th and then the tree lighting was at 5:00. This East Schools, uh, chorus was wonderful. Alan Phelps did a fantastic job and he, and there was another, I don't know how old he was, maybe fifth grader, uh, who was on the drums with no gloves on and it was freezing out. And I don't know how they did the keyboard and the drums that way, but they did a great job, cause it was cold. And the singers were great and all their parents were there, so it was really quite a nice crowded event. Um, the toy, they also ran, the Community Affairs Committee, who I want to thank very, very much, that's a great group of, uh, women who are on that committee, um, did a toy drive in conjunction with the Toys for Tots, which I'm sure added quite a bit to.
We got a lot. I don't, that hasn't given me the final count yet, but.
That helped out a lot. And I think that was a great, yeah, I think that was a great idea, great endeavor. Um, DPW for all the lights that went up, uh, fantastic job. I don't know how you do it. Does the cherry picker go all the way up there?
Yeah.
I guess it does.
The remote worked?
Yes. Yes, immediately there was no glitch. No glitch. It was awesome. It's beautiful. The trees look beautiful. Um, the Police Department for Crowd Management, they always do a great job with that. I know there's a little bit of a parking issue and I think people were trying to kind of edge closer and closer to the, uh, sound truck. But you kind of kept things cleared away. That was good. It's very crowded back there, coming up Lake. Um, and again, thank all the sponsors. Uh, just wonderful how people come forward for these things. So, that ends my report.
Thank you, Leslie.
Just like everybody else, just thank everybody for the, the, the trolley and the, the tree lighting. Um, I think it's great to get out in the community and just see friends and neighbors and, um, just for, for a great event like that. Um, we had a good time. I think everybody had a good time. Much appreciated. Um, also wanted to thank, um, everybody, uh, for the financial monitoring, um, meeting that we had, uh, last Thursday, all the time that the staff put into that. Um, I come from a finance background, so it's, it's, you know, I'm a bit biased, but I think it's one of the most important things the town does. And I think it, it demonstrates how well, um, the, the, the town administration does in, in managing the, the budget and the financings of the town. Um, the transparency of the process and, um, how funds are used and collected. I, I, I think it's, it's great. And, um, you guys did an excellent job, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
In conjunction with that, you would, you would miss, you mentioned the, um, the, the Kim's replacement?
Yes.
Any progress or leads or?
Yes. No, we're through. I mean, I was lucky, we, we had a, a very large applicant pool, but, um, that doesn't necessarily mean.
It's good.
They're all, so it takes a bit to get through. I think I have about 80 applicants. And so I've gone through and, um, uh, it's just tough with the holidays trying to schedule the next part, which is to get folks in here. And that's really where we are on that process now.
Okay.
So.
All right, cool. Great. Thank you for that. Um, also attended the, the master plan, um, meeting. Um, and I want to thank everybody that was involved in that. I'm very excited that the, the plan has been completed, um, that we have something in our hands. Um, really excited that the community will be able to get their hands on it and dig into it. Um, I also wanted to, to send a, a big thank you out to Fran Backstrom. I, she, she put in a ton of effort as, as the chair of that committee. Um, it wasn't the, the, the smoothest ride to get to the, the, the final plan. So I, I appreciate that, that she was able to, to, to guide that, that committee to, to conclusion and come out at the end with a document that I think the town can, um, feel good about. Um, and then lastly, um, happy holidays and I hope everybody has a safe new year. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Don?
Okay. Congratulations and thank you to everybody that had something to do with the trolley and the, um, tree lighting. Just to ditto on everybody else, um, the financial trend monitoring, um, it's enlightening and it's always concerning. It's, we talk about nearing the levy limit. I always get very concerned and the fact that it's out there and, you know, we just have to stay on top of things to try to postpone that as far as out as we can. So. But I thank you for all the information, John, and all the hard work. So.
Thank you.
And on the holidays, everybody stay safe, keep your tree watered, make sure it doesn't get too dry. Um, lights off when you're not home and just kind of, um, monitor those trees. Cause we know that that's a big source of fires during the holiday season. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Don. I'll just, uh, I have a lot of thanks to add for various things here, since everyone's already mentioned them. Uh, I'd like to add my thanks for the tree lighting ceremony. Uh, thanks to the Community Affairs Committee for doing all the organization for that. Um, really appreciate it. It's always a very nice event. This year, I think it was maybe a little colder, but a little drier than it might've been in past years recently. So, uh, it was an excellent turnout, very, very busy. I always, uh, one highlight for me is always Mary Kate Ellsworth singing the National Anthem as part of it. Um, so, um, appreciate all the work by Public Safety and DPW for, for their contributions to making the event go and then getting everything set up appropriately. So thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. Uh, Master Plan Steering Committee, I'd like to add my thanks to Fran Backstrand, who chaired the committee, and Rick Leaf, who's the Vice Chair, for guiding us through these last 18 months or so to, um, work through a lot of details with the consultant, to try to herd the dozen or more cats, uh, members of the committee in, uh, a common direction eventually. Um, I was pleased to serve as the board's representative on that committee. It represented, uh, um, a lot of different boards and committees across town, representing different, uh, interests or open space, um, historical preservation, affordable housing, um, the downtown area, economic development, uh, land use, um, just many categories, public facilities and services. So, um, just happy to finally see it come together. The consultants really put in a lot of, uh, time at the end there to try to dot all the i's, cross all the t's and, and get the report in our hands. Uh, the Planning Board, as you know, held their public hearing last, uh, Tuesday at the library. Um, we had a pretty good turnout. I'd say, I don't know, 50, 60 people maybe, something on that order. Um, each of the members of the, uh, or several members of the Master Plan Steering Committee presented the different segments, components of it. Um, and now it's in the hands of the Planning Board. The next phase, as, uh, as Fran Backstrand explained, would be for this board to, uh, consider the composition of an implementation committee who would then take the recommendations of, of the master plan and begin to figure out, for the short term at least, um, uh, how to prioritize and begin executing on some of the recommendations. So I look forward to, uh, to that process, uh, taking place. Um, last Thursday night, financial trend monitoring, uh, as always, John, excellent presentation and, uh, great focus on the critical issues that will be affecting this year's budget as well as the 10-year look back and five-year look forward as we try to see where we are in the context of, uh, uh, the economic climate and understand our own, uh, constraints in trying to deliver services to the town, uh, on a, in as cost-effective a way as we can, um, recognizing that, uh, those costs don't stand still. They increase invariably. So. Appreciate all the work you did. Finance Director Jason Little, Tax Collector Amy Haley and Assessor Dan Broge are part of the financial team to help put that together. This is a meeting that included the Board of Selectmen, the Financial Planning Committee, the Appropriations Committee and the School Committees and School Administration. So it's really is a, kind of a collective group who really need to understand, uh, uh, what the context that we're operating in is and how that affects or influences our budget cycle this year, um, that we'll bring to town meeting. So appreciate all the work that went into it. It is a lot of detail, but it's a lot of useful detail. Um, and certainly is, uh, a lot of important things that we need to keep our eye on and, uh, provides the information that we need in order to, once again, as we have over the last decade, uh, bring a, a responsible budget to town meeting and accomplish what, what we try to accomplish for the citizens. So. And then finally, just, uh, wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday. Hope you all, uh, enjoy the time with family and friends and, uh, see you back here in January when the year turns to 2020. So. And that concludes my report. John?
Uh, just one thing to mention tonight, um, we did receive, uh, the, uh, retirement notice for Kelly Burke, our longtime, uh, senior center director. So Kelly's been with us for 14 years. And, um, Kelly was one of my first hires. And, uh, we worked very closely for a lot of, a lot of time to move from what was a 1,400 square foot senior center over on Center Drive to a 14,000 square foot senior center up on, uh, 119 Colburn Street. And, uh, Kelly's done a phenomenal job for us and, uh, she really has made that the, um, the envy of central Massachusetts. Uh, we draw residents and seniors from the region that go to our programs and our senior center. So, uh, Kelly is retiring and, uh, she has indicated that she's taken a position with the, her professional association, the Mass, uh, Council on Aging, um, Association. And so she's going to be working on membership and council on aging, uh, items. And she indicated to me that was basically her, her dream retirement job. So, um, so Kelly will be transitioning. Uh, obviously, uh, that leaves us with, uh, another significant hole in our management team. Uh, that particularly, that particular, uh, um, facility and management is very, very thin in terms of staffing. There's three full-time people and then a lot of part-time folks that are paid for through revolving funds and a lot of volunteers. My initial approach, just so that you know, is, uh, to immediately, I'm going to seek for an interim director while we, uh, put out a, uh, recruitment, uh, for a full-time, uh, replacement. So, uh, now, that's another thing on the plate that we need to, to, to focus on. Um, but that facility can't, we don't have the staff to just run down and there's no assistant director. So, uh, so again, uh, I wish Kelly a happy transition. Um, and again, I'm just, uh, I'm sad to see her go. We've been through a lot together. Uh, once you do a building project together and you go through that with somebody, it's a, it's a, it's a shared traumatic event and very beautiful at the end. So I like childbirth. And, uh, so we've been through a lot together. And, um, I just wish Kelly well and just publicly wanna, wanna thank her for being just a tremendous senior center director and, uh, and just a, just a real valued member of the management team. She's done a fantastic job with, with that facility. So.
Right, right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, John. Uh, yeah, certainly very sorry to see Kelly go, but, uh, wish her well and, uh, and understandably, if she has this transitionary op- opportunity to take advantage of, then it's understandable that she would, uh, want to make the most of that and continue serving, um, the senior population. So.
Date of her retirement, John?
Pardon me?
Her date of retirement?
January 10th.
Uh, let's see. So that brings us to public comment. Anyone have any public comment they'd like to offer?
Just because Jeff Anderson's no longer here, please make sure you're shoveling your hydrant. That was Jeff's, uh, for you, right?
Absolutely.
Chief Franty adds, please, uh, be mindful of the snowstorms, keep your fire hydrants clear around town. Yes, that one is for you, Jeff. And, uh, new business. We have, uh, consider renaming the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. John, do you want to?
Uh, sure. At, um, I believe it was, uh, two meetings ago, um, uh, Julian Hirsch had mentioned, uh, the possibility of, uh, entertaining the change of the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Been a number of communities that have done this, uh, in the recent, uh, past. And, uh, and it depends on, uh, how you're structured. Uh, so some towns are, don't have a charter, some towns it's just a bylaw. Uh, so depending on your enabling legislation and how you are formally set up, that determines the path on, on how that process would work. So for us, um, typically changing, uh, a charter change along these lines would require using the processes laid out in Mass General Law, Chapter 43B. Um, that is one option. Um, but after talking with council, and as I read my memo over here, it might not be, it's something I would like to emphasize now, is council, uh, in his review of the, uh, Mass General Laws, indicated that, that basically, if you're looking for a name change, that you're really better off, the approach would be, uh, seeking special legislation. So going through a special act at the legislature. And the reason for that is in Mass General Law, Board of Selectmen is the term. And there is no recognition legally of any other term for what you, what you do and what you are. And so, uh, it would require a special act, um, of the legislature in order to make, uh, any other name like Select Board apply to, to the town. So that would be the process. Um, obviously, uh, it's not just changing the name, but it has implications for the entire, the town charter. Uh, all of the code, the administrative code would need to be changed, documents, our electronic presence on the web. All that stuff would, would need to be changed. Um, and so, but, so that would be the, the process. It would be a special act of the legislature and then implementation, if that's. if that was the desire of the board.
Okay. Is it, would you have a work estimate as far as accomplishing?
And as I laid out here, you know, we've talked about a few things tonight, and we're missing the assistant.
Yes.
I'm trying to get a facilities manager. I just lost the, the retirement of the Senior Center Director. So we just, you know, there's a lot of projects on, on deck right now. But it would, the process would be the Board of Select, drafting of a warrant article, special act, town meeting approval, legislature would approve, and then it would be the implementation. And the implementation would, I don't really know what, how involved or how much time it would take, but it would require town council and just, just cleaning up all the documents in the entire town code. Now, if you recall, I've discussed with the board prior, on a prior basis, we actually had it budgeted at one time and weren't able to get it done, is what's called a recodification project. And I've done this project in two prior towns that I've worked in. It takes about twelve to eighteen months, where you go through and you clean up your town code. And so you deal with things that have been superseded by state statute or changes in federal law. You update everything. And the other thing that we typically do is you, I would go through and change all of the town code language to gender neutral. I wouldn't go so far as to change the name of a board or committee, but that could be done, you know, as part of a larger project like that. So again, I don't have an opinion on this. I, I would do whatever the board would direct me to do. But, you know, again, it will, it will take up, you know, it would be another project to, to take on at a time where we just have a, we have a lot on our plate at the moment. But again, my job is to implement, implement the will of the board. So if this is something you want to do and it's a priority, then we would, would make it happen, so.
Okay. Thank you, John. Members of the board, would you like to comment? Julian?
Yes. So I think it's very reasonable to postpone this and to bundle it into the recodification project. It, it makes, I think, best sense for workload and, and everything else. So I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable holding off on this.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Leslie?
Yeah, I agree. I think that if we're going to have a recodification project, then kind of discussing the pros and cons of it now is pointless. There's no point in wasting the energy to discuss it, because we're going to have to discuss it again before we entertain the whole idea of actually doing it.
Yeah. Okay. Tim?
I agree.
Well, I agree that doing it right now would be foolish. But I want to go on record in saying I am totally opposed to changing the name of the Board of Selectmen. I've been a selectman twenty-seven years, and for twenty-seven years, I've been proud to be a selectman. It's historical. It's New England. I don't understand why we would be throwing out history just because some of us don't like to be called a selectman. So just for the record, I am opposed to it, and doing it at this point in time certainly makes no sense.
Thank you. I'll add my comment, which is basically to say, I am for this in principle. I think just acknowledging the forward movement, I guess, in recognition of, of gender and the, many communities, I think, around the state who are taking this step and, and making this advance. I think it's reasonable and appropriate to plan on this in the timeframe that would make sense at a future recodification effort. So my opinion, I guess, is that I'm not opposed to it. I'm, I think it's a suitable thing to do, and we just need to find the right time to fit it into the work path that would otherwise take place with the town code and the available time of town staff and town council to address it when we don't have quite so much of a workload as we currently have, particularly taking into account some of the vacancies that we have in staff, so. So I think we have an acknowledgement to be taken of for the future date. Leslie?
I'd like to add too, since you kind of opened the Pandora's Box on that. I'm in agreement with Don. I feel that, you know, I've never really looked at the word "selectmen" as two different words, "select" men. It has never deterred me from doing anything in this community. I've never heard anyone say it deterred them. I've never heard anyone mention it. Looking at the origins of the Me Too movement, it is primarily directed toward and kind of rose out of sexual abuse and sexual harassment, of which this has nothing to do. And it also, in the broader sense of the Me Too movement, it has expanded to kind of address the, let's say marginalized groups. I don't feel that we're marginalized in any way. And so I kind of feel like this is a, an issue that is unnecessary at this point. Again, I think we can have a discussion if we do talk about recodification. But I agree with the, the tradition of it, and I think it's kind of a cool New England thing. And ironically, I, I attended an all-women's college, and really, if anyone, you'd think that an all-women's college graduate would really get their dander up about the word "selectmen." And I don't feel that way at all. If anything, I consider it a challenge. So, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Julia?
So I, I have a question about the recodification. When was the last time we did it? And is this the kind of project that, you know, we might be able to hire a summer intern to help with?
No, no, I appreciate that comment. So as, again, I've done this in two towns. No, what you would do is you would hire a consulting firm that has attorneys, and they literally will go through every line of the code. A big part of it is updating it, because at, when things change at the state and federal level, it renders a lot of things moot, you know, and so they get superseded. And, and then as you add laws in, there's little inconsistencies and things. Basically, you clean it up, soup to nuts. So it would be a consultant, working with typically someone in the, in my office. This would be a project that I would typically assign to the Assistant Town Administrator to oversee and working with town council. Like I said, it takes about twelve to eighteen months. It usually results in, you know, anywhere from, you know, fifteen to thirty articles at town meeting. So it's a big, it's a big project. And it's, and it's not a cheap project either. It's an expensive thing. But it's something that, you know, you, most people put it off, because a lot of it's, it's housekeeping, a lot of it. It's cleaning up, you know, a lot of outdated things. And so it's important, but, but it, it's got to rise to when you have time to do it, you know, so.
So in your tenure here, it's, it's never been done?
No, we haven't done it. I, I had put something in the budget, I want to say, three years ago, that, to tentatively do it. And, and again, I don't remember what the crisis or issue was at that time, but we, we didn't get to it. You know, one of the issues that we face in a town our size, and you, you've heard me say this before, is Northborough is just big enough that we have sort of one of everything, you know, in terms of staffing. But we don't have any real depth to the bench. So like Kelly Burke resigns, I have to get an interim while we recruit, because we literally can't function. And so when we lose key positions, and we've gone through in the last couple of years, as everybody has, as a lot of our baby boomers are retiring, we've seen turnover in almost every critical department and a lot of turnover in the management team. All three of those guys are new. You're still the new guys. You're going to be the new guys for a while. Well, maybe not. Well, Live is the new chief, who has been here for thirty-nine years, but who's counting? But we've had a lot of transitions, and those transitions are critical for a community our size, because like, you know, like when I lose Kim, so the Assistant Town Administrator's gone. She's the, also the HR Director, so I have no HR. So all the day-to-day HR stuff kind of falls on me, so. So it's tough to find an opportunity to, to, to do, you know, a house, a nice housekeeping, cleaning type project. Again, there's nothing in here that, there's nothing there that's, that's critical. It's just one of those things that you, you know, you do as a matter of course, so. I, again, I love it. I've done it twice. I think it's great. But you gotta, I'd, I'd love to have the time to do it as well, and that's really what we need to. What's that?
Need a sabbatical.
I need three more people.
To wind up this part of the discussion, I'll just acknowledge that in, in the twenty-five years that I've been in town, there has always been a very strong presence of women on most of the town boards and committees, elected or appointed positions, and providing a lot of leadership. So from that standpoint, I don't think we are in a circumstance where women in town don't feel empowered or, or feel there's an obstacle to serving in these positions or anything. So I think it's more semantics, or I should say, I'm not sure what I'm saying. You would know what I'm saying, about what we call the board, as opposed to how the board operates and who operates on the board. So in my mind, it's typically thinking of it as the Select Board, even though we call it the Board of Selectmen, so. Very good. Item number two, renewal of selectmen's licenses for the calendar year 2020. We have in our packets the list of license renewals. I think you've all had an opportunity to inspect the thick files in the office with the various license renewals. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the renewal of the annual licenses for the calendar year 2020 as indicated on the 2020 license renewals list. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor. Thank you. Number three, execution of Cemetery Deed 1089. Motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to execute Cemetery Deed 1089. Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor? And any other business to come before the board? John?
No other business this evening.
Okay, very good. So I have a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn. Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you all very much.